Be great.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good to see you again. We're here for a repeat to go over the River Island Master Plan specifically for the Samar Payne Park and what our team has been working on. I'm going to introduce you to Jeff Bowley, our city engineer. He's been heading up this group along with Viewshed. I'll give you a background status and then we'll give you a presentation.
Good evening. Jeff Bowley, City Engineer. We last met in October with our consultants, Viewshed. He was here again tonight. We have Jessica and Hillary can introduce themselves, but this is for a Samar Payne Park Master Plan, which is a kind of a next step of the Riverfront Island Master Plan update that was done a few years ago. This will get us to the next phase where we can really narrow down some future projects and start to prioritize what's important to you guys for us to put forth in the future LCIPs to continue improving the park for various reasons that they'll go through. So I don't want to waste any any more time. Go ahead, Jessica.
All right. Good evening. My name is Jessica Higgins. I'm a landscape designer with Viewshed and I'm the project manager.
And I'm Hillary O'Judge at Viewshed and I'm a landscape architect and principal at the firm.
All right, let's get started. So first, we want to give you a real quick recap of the Riverfront Master Plan update. So again, we're focusing in on just Samar Payne Park. We're trying to figure out how to integrate elements of the Riverfront Master Plan into the park in the final master plan design. We're also looking at the Oxford Street Streetscape, which the Riverfront Master Plan designed a series of parking spaces, a pop-up market, pop-up tent on Market Day, and canal steps as well. So I'm going to introduce two different concept plans, and I just want to caveat this. We're going to go through this very quickly and we will wait for your comments both at the end, and we will give a period of one to two weeks for you to get back to us with any questions that you may have as well. I also want to say that although we are showing two different master plan options, consider this a fruit salad. Maybe you like the Oxford Street Streetscape of Concept A, but not of Concept B, and on Concept B, you like the amphitheater design. That is okay. Let us know what you like and we can go through and pick out the elements and piece them together. So let's begin with the existing conditions. Now, on this existing conditions plan, we are showing the ribbon path and the Beach Street Extension and Woodorf Turnaround. Although those are not currently constructed, they are in construction documentation currently, so we are assuming they are going to be installed as is. Looking at the existing pedestrian circulation space, we mostly have a north-south connection point between downtown Lewiston and across the river over to Auburn, and a central, a path, excuse me, that circulates around the outside. This is what we're calling Concept One. Now, this is a more simplified plan. Starting at the top of the plan, we show a very, a canal access point that's up in that corner, right where Oxford Street turns north. This is just a simple set of stairs that gets people down to the river in a very targeted point where kids can't get down there and kind of wander through the canal. I know that was a concern last time. On both of the plans, we're showing a pedestrian bridge that crosses over from Oxford Street into Samar Payne. We're also showing canal overlooks, so these are primarily going to be on the Oxford Street side looking over, over the park, enjoying views of the water in that direction. We're showing a dining plaza over near the Red Shop, as well as an enlarged stage area, accessible seating, restrooms over near the amphitheater area. The memorial is going to be placed over in the Woodorf Turnaround as you come across the pedestrian bridge from Auburn. We also have an adventure playground and a, an area that's just to, well, the, next to the picnic pavilion in the granite steps, there is a expanded paved area that can be used to pull the loading, or the, excuse me, to load and unload the boat dock, as well as set up for tents during events. This is a upgraded circulation plan for this first option. So as you can see, we're adding in a central path through the park for connections to the north and south, as well as connections from the center of the park down to the waterside. This is an ADA accessible path to provide seating for people in wheelchairs and people who have accessibility issues to enjoy shows in the amphitheater area. We're also showing several areas where we can integrate art into the master plan. This can be through simple sculptures or through more elaborate murals, but there are several areas throughout the plans that we can drop in that provide art opportunities. Concept Two. Concept Two is, keeps a majority of the elements of Concept One, but kind of reshuffles them around and rethinks how they can be integrated. So our canal overlooks still exist on, along Oxford Street, along the top of the page. However, in this instance, they're going to be cantilevered over the canals to enjoy views across the water and up the park. We have moved the memorial area over away from the Woodorf Turnaround to the plan north, so when you come into the park across the pedestrian bridge, you will see the memorial area in a more prominent space. We keep the dining plaza around the Red Shop, and we're also showing the, the loading dock in ADA accessible space just along the river, near the existing dock. In this instance, we're showing removable seating in the amphitheater area, as well as just a smaller ADA ramp that comes up from the plan south up north, so it doesn't connect to the central pathway that we're showing on this plan. The restrooms are integrated with changing rooms in this particular option because the adventure playground is a little bit more expansive. We're showing a splash pad integrated with this. And in order to accommodate splash pad, we are having to design a retaining wall that raises the level of the ground up and out of the flood zone, so that's why that, we're showing that is a retaining wall in that particular area. This introduces a new element with the adventure playground where we can actually have a climbing wall since we're showing a retaining wall there for the splash pad. This is the circulation plan for this particular option, again, showing a lot more connections throughout the park from the center down towards the south, our plan south, where the water is. And again, several opportunities to integrate art. Now, we're going to go into a couple, what we call perspective views, to give you a better idea of what these plans are showing. So in this case, this is the adventure playground with the retaining wall. You can see the climbing fixtures on the back and a splash pad elevated up above. Moving over to the canals, this would be the canal overlooks that are cantilevered over the canals, and you can see some integrated artwork into the, the water of the canals just to the right. And then we move over to the canal steps. Now, this was shown in the Riverfront Master Plan. This would be a way to provide access down to the water by people coming from, or people who are visiting Samar Payne Park itself. So the first option showed more of a targeted area where you could access just with a boat. In this case, this would allow many people to access the water, to kayak, and in this particular case, it's, it reacts to the level of the canal water, so you could either flood the canal or have it down lower and, and provide more space for seating.
So we wanted to provide some precedent imagery to further illustrate the ideas that Jess was just speaking about with the plans. So on the canal infrastructure, looking at the perspective views that Jess just showed, we have a couple options for bringing people down to the water. We can either have them come down on the steps, as shown on the top left or bottom right, or have those overlooked structures, similar to the one that she showed in the perspective view. It could be a material that recalls the railroad history of the site, or it could be something more similar to the view that we saw earlier. We also have spoken a lot with the city team about really activating the canal space in different ways to do that. So bringing people down into the water through stepping stones that could be visible when the water level is low, or could potentially be invisible and flooded in an instance where the water level is much higher. We were also interested in ways to integrate art throughout the site in kind of natural ways, integrating the NEA grant that we know the city has received. So the image on the bottom left shows a simple pedestrian bridge, but they've incorporated artistic elements in the way they've designed the rails and in kind of an artistic sculptural gesture on top. Another way we've discussed activating the canal is through art in the canal itself, either sculptures that can respond to the water level, so that, in the instance on, on the upper right, more or less of the sculpture will be visible as the water level changes. Or in the center, thinking about ways to activate those canal walls through art, through murals, or through more static sculptures, as you see. We'd been talking a lot throughout the process about bringing in kayaks and bringing people down into the water, and we've talked about some other ways to activate through stand-up paddle boarding or little paddle boats or some little boat races. And then here we are in winter, thinking about how to activate this space now when people are cold. So on the left, looking at a low water level in the canals that would allow the water to freeze well, so that people could skate throughout that network. We've also discussed having a skating rink, an ice skating rink in the pavilion area, and that could be something that's chilled, or it could be something that is a more natural ice skating rink that could freeze and thaw depending on the weather, or it could be a synthetic. But just the concept that we could be bringing people in and activating that space even in the winter. And then to the side of the adventure playground, there's a lovely grove of trees and an existing slope that we thought would be a wonderful sledding hill for the little ones. It wouldn't be as exciting for the teenagers, but it's a great place, right next to the playground, to, to have the little ones do some sledding. And then we were looking at some different themes we could explore in the adventure playground. It's such a rich site, being on the water with the canals and, and the rich railroad history and the history of the mill structures, and so we, we have a lot of different ideas that we could bring to life here and would love to hear your thoughts as well, whether it's a sculptural element that the water feature could interact with, or a really fun railroad theme that you could climb on, more nature-based play, things, elements recalling the, you know, the water history, boats, barges, or there's a lot of water play elements that are very interactive, where kids can, can turn gears and make the water move up an archimedes screw, as shown here. We're also, as Jessica mentioned earlier, activating that retaining wall with low climbing structures, so they can play there as well. And the pavilion structure that we're leaving space for in the ribbon plan, construction documents, that would be as part of this master plan. We've initially talked in the overall master plan for the Riverfront, the image on the upper right is most similar to what you would have seen there. We also wanted to present some other options where there could be art integrated, such as in the upper left, or in the bottom right where the, this, it's a very sculptural pavilion, and in this case, it wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't have designed something with holes in it, but something along those lines where you could see the pavilion from a distance and it would really be a marker of, of the site. Another option we've investigated is tensile structure with sort of shade sails that could cover a stage at times, but those would have to be removed during the winter. And then we just, Jeff touched on earlier, but we just want to remind you of the master plan schedule, where we are in the overall process, which kicked off for us in August. We had our presentation with you in October, and so this is kind of the midpoint in terms of our, our presentations to you. And following this presentation, we welcome your feedback, and then we'll, we'll work towards our final design presentation in end of March, early April. And we welcome any questions you might have now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. One quick question I had, there was discussion, you know, a lot of planning for changing water levels in the canal. Do water levels change in the canal? Director Gonya?
Right now, we don't actively change those levels. We've discussed, we have dewatered the canal to do maintenance. You've seen that this past summer, both by the inlet dam where they were doing some work, as well as our own work underneath Mill Five and other areas, some of the gate valves under Red Shop, and then at some of our other weers. We now can manage that better because of those improvements that we've recently done. Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the issue we have with totally dewatering is freeze and thaw in those walls through the winter, so we really don't want to drain it down without actually structurally being consider of, of the retaining walls. They've been typically filled. Ice does form. We've talked about how can we make it more shallow to make it more safe. It's not a five, six-foot deep canal. So we talked to me possibly raising the bottom, so the level itself could be the same throughout the canals, but we might be able to get water depth something where it's more manageable for some recreational activities or for the water to freeze naturally in the canal. So we have some options, ability to change that level. Those are some of the restrictions we're thinking about now.
Gotcha. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Soul.
Hi, how you doing? At first, these are really beautiful. You did a really great job. I think I'm a little more partial to Concept Number Two, because I really love the splash pad. I think that's a fantastic, it gets pretty hot sometimes in the summer, and the climbing wall, all that interactive stuff for kids, I think it's going to be really great for families and they're going to want to, want to come. My one question is, the, well, the amphitheater, I think maybe is what it is, the removable seating, and then the, on Concept One, it says enlarged stage. So is it, would it, would there still be a stage for Concept Two? What's the removable seating?
Yes. So in Concept One, we enlarge in the stage because we heard that not very many events were held there because the stage is too small. So in this particular instance, we're just showing an enlarged stage to try and accommodate more bands or events in the space. In the second option, we're keeping the footprint of the existing stage, but we're showing removable café seating so that it can be used for picnics during the lunch day. And then if there's an event there, we can just simply remove
the- So it could be for both, both uses, as well as the pavilion for a band or-
Yes.
And I like the canopy with the, the sails.
Yes.
I like that. Nice job. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for looking at the stairs. I always want to raise that question. I have two questions, actually. I like Concept Two as well. I like it more so the memorial is going to be up front where people get to see it. That's the purpose behind that. As far as I'm concerned, you bury it in the back of the park. What's the use of even having it? But I do like the amphitheater on one, because I think grass seating in a larger stage promotes for more activities than a, the small stage we have. So how, how we get that, I'll send that forward. Dogs. Do we allow dogs in Samar Park?
That is a very good question.
I believe it's a public park, so dogs are allowed. They're not, they're not prohibited. However, during different activities like the balloon festival and I think as well as our Dempsey Challenge, I think that they are, they are not wanted, so we post that. So yeah, we, we see dogs and people walking through there, but it's not a dog park, and we have no designated dog park in there.
That's kind of where I'm going with this, with the buildup of, you know, the apartments and things we're going to be having downtown and things coming, people have dogs. I mean, I would like to see a designated dog area. Not that they couldn't walk the whole park, but a place they could go that's somewhat fenced in and throw balls. If not, I watch people in the summertime take the big field and throw, and you get kids running around. There's always potential for a problem. So that's something I don't see in this element, that, you know, I don't think it needed to be gigantic. Down on Strawberry Avenue, if you go down by there and see part of the area they have down there, probably half of what they have would probably work for some area that a dog could be, at least we can say, if you come to the park and you have dogs on a leash, great. If you come to your park and you want to unleash your dog and play with the dog, that we have a designated area. And I think from a comfort standpoint, and it being our property and potential lawsuits for being dogs biting people or whatever, I'd like to see something along that line. Other than that, I think it looks awesome. You guys did a terrific job.
Yes, Counselor Najin.
So just, just a few pieces. First and foremost, it's great. I like everything that's, that's put forward here. To come to the dog piece, there's property that we own that's where the wastewater discharge containers are located as well, right on the other side of the red shed. So possibly that might be a more appropriate space for like a dog park, just think, thinking about when people use public spaces, there's cultural considerations. There's all, all these pieces that, you know, some people are afraid of dogs ultimately, overall, or don't want to see them in their spaces around kids, and so keeping that piece separate might be good. One thing that I'm a little, like, curious about, there's quite a few people who kayak who are older, as well as folks that, that require ADA access. And I'm seeing here that this is, you know, the steps kind of paints a picture that you're going to have to lug your kayak down the steps, and, you know, I, I'm wondering if there's any thought on how to, you know, to, to better allow access for folks that, that, you know, for instance, I, I know a kayaker that has no legs, or, you know, no, you know, basically, yeah, no legs. And so, and it seems that like seniors, you know, really like to kayak, but it comes down to this, this piece where it's difficult to actually find spaces to do it in and access. So I, just a thought, you know, obviously, I'm less worried about access to the canal because of the fact that you could just literally walk in the Andrusgoggin River right now. So like, it's kind of, you know, but obviously, the depth is important. I agree with the proposals for putting the monument up front. I think that's good. I think that the, the walking paths in Concept Two are a little like, I don't, I don't know where exactly they're going. And so like, it's always one of these things that like, we have a lot of paths that go nowhere in our community. So, so like, having like, purposes for the paths is always good. And I had a question about the, both the amphitheater and the, and the kind of the staging area. From what I understood, that was supposed to be flexible so that we could use it in, in different ways, and that there wasn't actually going to be a stage, so to speak. Like, if there was staging gear, I believe the conversation was that it would be portable and movable, so it could be used in other scenarios as well in the community. And then also like, you know, if, for instance, if it's a, it's a, you know, a duo playing, they don't need a stage, you know, type of thing. So, so that's considered in this?
Yes, I'm assuming you're speaking of the future pavilion area?
Yeah.
Yes, and that is still up for debate, whether or not this is going to be just completely flush and gravel with the, the tensile or shade sail structure above, or if we're going to actually have some type of built-up stage area that could be used for both. That is something we would love your feedback on.
I just would suggest that it be flexible. Whatever it is, it be flexible, so that different community groups can use it in different ways, different event organizers can, can use it in different ways. And I guess the only other piece that I would, that I would mention in here is that the, actually, I'll hold the comment. Yeah, that, that basically covers it. I'm more interested in seeing those flexible spaces where you can do multiple activities, and, and so I just want to make sure that like, we're being cognizant of that, because if we build, right now, we have a railroad loading dock, right, and that's our stage. And you can't move it, you can't take it away. It's what it is. And so I, I wouldn't want to make that mistake with a big stage or a small stage. That's all.
Yes, Counselor Glant.
One more quick question about parking. School buses. You know, we're making a great park, be a great place for kids to go fall and spring, but if you look at the area, school bus parking could be an issue. Has that been considered or could be considered somehow? I mean, they're probably not going to be there weekends, but schools like day trips and taking kids out, picnics, especially in the springtime when we get the weather better. So I'd like to see something, I can't tell if it's there, but that we have some designated area for school buses, and maybe we designate them only during weekdays or when school's in session, so the park can be used for other things. I've seen that when I was in Boston, they had areas that said school buses, but it had a thing on it that during school year. So I just want to throw that out there, that if we're going to make this a community thing, our schools are a big part of our community. Thank you.
Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. Just a quick question on the memorial. Is that the police memorial that, that was down there before?
Yes.
And then otherwise, I, I really like parts of both of these concepts, and I'll plan to provide more detailed feedback over email or something.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, Counselor Najin.
I wasn't going to say it, but I'll say it. The pavilion photographs from Thompson's Point with the ice skating rink, that design at Thompson's Point is, is really good. Basically, if there's rain at a concert, you have coverage. It, it acts for all kinds of different purposes, and so I guess what I'm saying is, I love the idea of an ice skating rink in the wintertime, obviously. I don't think the canals as, as a skating surface is really going to be a viable option at all points, where, you know, a small space like, well, not a small space, but a more controlled space would be maybe a little better. And again, if we ever get to the point where we're having 10 or 12 events down there a year, we can't control the weather, and so if you have 5,000 people who want to stand under something, that model from Thompson's Point is great, so.
Yes, Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. I just remembered one other item. Who, who do we send our comments to? That wasn't expressed in the beginning. So if I want to send you my ideas, does it go to the architects? Does it go to our engineer? Does it go to our boss man over there? That's what I'd like to know. Or does it go to the real boss man in the back first and then gets funnel out? Please, thank you.
So you can forward all your comments to me that I wanted to acknowledge. We have Shelley Norton here, who's also been a key part of this project. John Connor, Nate Libby have also attended. So we've had other staff that you see other than this table. Feel, feel free to reach out to any of us, ask questions when you see us, but an email with some key points would be helpful.
Thank you.
The only, yes, Counselor Najin.
The one thing I would say too is, I'm sure there's been communication with the stakeholder groups, the individuals that helped come up with the Riverfront Island Master Plan, but if not, I would suggest to reach out to the folks that, that helped the design concept to just say, we're at this stage, do you all have any feedback? Because those groups were well represented as, as community partners, so.
Counselor Soul.
I just have one more question. I'm trying to picture, you mentioned sledding on that hill. There's a path in between that hill and the river, is there, and that would stay? And I think there's a, there is a fence between that path and the river. Okay. I just would be very nervous. Sometimes you, sleds get away from you, and I wouldn't want anyone ending up in the river.
I think this is the hill we're talking about.
Yeah. Okay.
At this moment, there is no fence.
I couldn't remember if there's a fence or not. I would just want something to keep them from-
Yeah, sorry.
There's fencing-
Jetting over to Auburn.
Back here, once you get further back.
Okay. Thank you.
The only other consideration that I can think of right now, you know, a lot of times in concepts, you know, you have, you know, what are like really good ideas, but long-term, you know, how do things, you know, what maintenance is required and so on and so forth. And so, you know, and what kind of supervision is required? and so forth. And so, you know, and what kind of supervision is required? I mean, I have a hard time seeing an unsupervised splash pad, and I don't know if, you know, that's a long way from the rec department, and our current splash pad, which is like right there. And, you know, and the kind of, you know, it's not like we're gonna leave it running like all the time. So, yeah, I just wanna make sure that we have sustainable elements that don't require replacement, you know, supervision, a ton of maintenance, et cetera. Public Works is busy enough at this point. Councilor Najin, yes?
And that comes back to the pavilion and the staging area for the amphitheater as well. The more durable and basic it is, I think, the better it's gonna be. Basically, it's power access is gonna be a big part of it, you know, and, yeah. So, again, like, I think, simpler and able to be adapted to many different uses is going to be the way to go in that case.
You know, I have a hard time, you know, while the water, what was that, a water corkscrew in one of the photos? Seems great, seems like something they would have like in a Montezori, you know, playground. I have a hard time seeing that holding up over time. You know, anything with moving parts is gonna be, take a lot of wear and tear.
Yeah, so I've seen those in the flesh, in a number of parks, and they are incredibly solidly built, those particular elements. And so they're designed for kids to bang on them with rocks, and, you know, throw things at them. And they're really, because they're such basic, you know, essentially ancient technology, they're very simple and they're really hard to destroy, compared to more modern play equipment that you see at most of your playgrounds. So it does have one positive going for it, that ancient idea.
Understood. I just think, anything that's there should just be loose and strong, so.
Yes.
Further comments or questions from the council at this point? And, yeah, I guess we're gonna, we have what, two weeks to email you with questions and comments, Director Gagnon?
Sure, two weeks worth.
Okay. Well, thank you both so much for being here.
Thank you. Thank you.
And now, we will have an update here on, let's see here, condominiums and solid waste collection workshop.
Evening.
Oh, hi.
We have to close this one down.
Deputy Director Bates, thank you for joining us.
Good to be here this evening.
So, we've had several emails from residents, property owners, customers, asking about a condo, or how do condos fit in in transition. And if you look at our downtown, we're seeing a lot of changes right now. It's very exciting. How do we deal with solid waste? That's a problem. I mean, the last couple of years, we've been dealing with a lot of litter. So, in development of a new project, that's what code and planning and the engineers do, is figure out where, where are we gonna, where are we gonna put containers, how are we gonna do solid waste? And I think it's been very thoughtfully done. We're here to talk to you a little bit today about condos specifically, because that topic is, has some range to it. If we're talking about changing our existing use in a downtown multi-unit apartment building, there's density, there's issues on site, which may be very site-specific. They're trying to reuse a property and redevelop it, which I think is very creative and a good idea. But those site constraints, they're not renovating a site, they're not demoing and creating additional parking or a different site. So we're trying to work with what we have. So, so those are some of the considerations that we wanted to bring to you today, in talking about just the considerations of all the site-specific issues with condos. And if there's any changes made, what would that look like? We are into a new agreement with Casella. I've told it, cart to curb is the term that I should be using, not automatic side load, because that's not gonna happen everywhere. So, and, you know, we are seeing costs by prorating and including in those carts for the existing services we already have. So, that's what they went out with. And our vendor has great experience in Lewiston, and we were able to get some good pricing for that. So, I think, before we start, if there's any changes to this, we can work up some additional numbers and talk about how that might happen. We just wanted to lay out where we're at today and what's going on with condos. And this is Megan Bates, Deputy Director, and I'll let her bring you through some of her information.
Okay, so this slide is showing that condominiums are throughout the city. And in this picture, there are five locations. I'll go into a little bit more detail in future slides. I do want to talk a little bit about what the city ordinance says about condominiums for those residents that are watching from home, that aren't familiar with Chapter 62 of the Solid Waste Ordinance. Under definitions in 62-11, it speaks about commercial waste, and it states solid waste generated by a commercial property, or as a result of commercial activity. And then, further down in the ordinance, it talks about commercial activity. It says, "Any property or service provider which has received a license from the City of Lewiston to conduct business and/or structures used for commercial or business purposes, including, but not limited to the following." And so it lists several different activities with condominiums being one of them, okay? Make sure I can move in here. Go to the next slide. So here is Westview Drive. It is eight units. As I state in the slide, it's included on the city collection. It was constructed in 1987. It's described as a residential townhouse condominium. It's off of Grove, and just around the corner from the Ron Moran Memorial Fields. Here's Ledges Court. It is 32 units on a private drive. You'll notice, if you look really close at the picture, to the left-hand side, you'll notice a dumpster there. And this is located off of Almond. And there's several condos in this area. This is Foliage Arbor Lane, and these units, there is a total of 33, and they are, two are off of private drives. This is Mount View Terrace. It's, if you drive up East Avenue, past Montello, and you keep going up that hill, East Avenue ends, Mount View begins, and it's a private drive. Again, 16 units here. Notice again, the dumpster. I can't tell you when it was constructed, again, because it's private property, so it's not on a public road. I can't tell you anything. I can't anyway, from GIS. This next slide shows condos. This is considered a condo garden. It's 191, 193 Russell. It's 16 units. Notice the dumpster on the far left-hand side. And this was built in 1979. 43 and 49 Lisbon Street was built in 1902. It is Kitty Corner from Dufrane Plaza, so right downtown, close to Main Street. This is 250 to 274 Blake Street, 12 units. It was constructed in the early 2000s, and it does receive city collection. And more specifically, we're looking at Blake, the corner of Blake and Maple. This is the most recent condominium. It was built in 1904, but it was renovated, apartment building renovation, turned into a four-unit condominium. So I'm gonna switch gears a little bit and talk about costs of collection. So we have the multi-unit apartment curbside collection program. This is for properties that are eligible to end the program. And as the slide indicates, this is also in Chapter 62, Section 13. The property has to be, had been constructed prior to May 6th of 2003. And that was kind of the cutoff, and that was kind of put in there to limit the number of collections, okay? There's a one-time application fee of $100 to get on the program. The annual fee is $170 per unit. If you, if an apartment building owner gets off the program, gets back on, they have to pay the $100 again. I do wanna talk a little too about what the difference is between residential and a multi-unit apartment building. So, the definition for residential includes your single family, your duplex, and if you're a three-unit owner occupy. If you have a three-unit, and the property owner lives in that unit, then they're considered residential. If not, then it's multi-unit. So, currently, on the program, in this program, we are constantly having people add to the program, taking off the program. So, we can get a picture of how many people or how many property owners are on it, but it changes. I think that's why I wanted to see about that one. Currently, as I had mentioned, it's $170 per unit. It's costing the city $250 per unit to cover the cost of this program. So that's something that we need to take into consideration. We did a little research on dumpsters, because some of these, obviously, there are space restrictions for, on some of these properties, they can't hold, they don't have room for a dumpster. It's getting more challenging to find companies that have a truck and a trailer that drive down the road, because the city's program is much less costly. So if you would want to get like a four-yard dumpster, you're gonna pay, and we figured a four-yard dumpster would service a three to four unit. So we're talking between $2,000 and $2,200 a year. Six-yard dumpster for a five to six unit would run you about $2,600 to $2,800, or $3,000 a year. And an eight-yard dumpster, which would service a seven to eight unit, is about $3,400 to $4,000 a year. And so, the city program is running about $510 to about $1,400 per year, between three and eight units. So you can see the difference. So we're recommending that at some point, we look at increasing the cost of this program, so we can cover the cost. That's the information I have. I know that I had some...
Right. So the specific request we had was to allow collection from January until June of this year. So I just wanna let you know, in following ordinances, there's nothing, no provisions in any of the city ordinances regard to this solid waste, for either the Public Works Director, the city administrator, or the city council to grant that. So that's just not something that we can accommodate. So that's why we're here tonight, is for you to consider, if you do have a policy change and wanna include condos, and what that would look like, that's the mechanism that would be to do it. So, there's no authority that I have as director to say, yeah, we're gonna do that. The other issue that we want, I wanted to bring up is, while we do have the property on Blake Street that is getting collection, I would, I don't have any background on that. So, as Megan had said, we have the groups picking up trash. They'll see a change in the use of the building, and they'll help notify either John, our solid waste superintendent, or Megan, and they'll follow up and see if that change of use has happened, and whether they fall out of the program, or something changes, so that we can let that property owner know and make adjustments, so that we're being fair, and we're applying the rules equitably to everybody. So, in regards to other properties, similar on Maple Street, there's some very similar-looking buildings than on Blake, and they look like condos. So, I did check that out, because I was curious. I'm still learning on some of these aspects. Those are actually owned by, I believe, Community Concepts. They're listed as apartments, so they don't fall under that. And we are not collecting.
We're not collecting.
We're not collecting those. So, just for information. So, similar to what we do in the other utilities, when we do, you know, services specific to a certain property, whether it's billing accurately for water or sewer, we try to be as accurate as possible, both by property owners and customers coming in, when property exchanges, or change of use, or things like that. But sometimes, we try to do an audit as well. So, we're kinda going through that now, and auditing some of the things, and being prepped for this presentation tonight. The Westview Bluffs, or Westview Drive, I know, I was around, heard, that initially was built as a private subdivision in condos. And that was approved for. And then that group came in and petitioned the council, and in that time, I think 2002 is when the city took over that drive that didn't meet road standards, both for approach to other side streets, as well as for other issues. That's the direction the city council at the time went. So, those are now, and I'm not sure if that was part of the agreement, in that that becomes a public street or public easement, and they also get curbside collection on that. We'll look into it and provide some more information if needed. I do know we switched over utilities, was also a concern. So, that's kind of where we're at. Budget-wise, we did, we do have our FY26 into the director of finance. Right now, we're looking at FY25 solid waste citywide collection is just under $700,000. Collection for citywide recycling is about $270,000, totaling $970,000 for collection. I wanna point out that the recycling agreement we have with Casella, the single sort, it's not generating revenue for us, but it's not costing us anything either. So the recyclables market has been volatile, depending on what the product is, and how clean that product is. We don't have to worry about that, and we're not incurring any cost other than collection. So, we're not losing money, but we're not, we're not saving necessarily. I can't, I can't give you a good number on that. But I do know that we're not having to deal with that and worry about market rates. FY26, we have proposed citywide solid waste collection, 2 million, just under 2,600,000. So it went from 700,000 to 2,600,000. That's currently proposed draft. That's also including the bins, the trash curbside containers, and new trucks to be able to pick those up. We're estimating that the recycling cost citywide is somewhere around $950,000. So, some of the discussion was, can we pick up recycling as well? All of these, adding services do add costs, so I just wanna bring that up, and where we're at with those two line items. Looking at different units and being able to add them into the program, we did some quick numbers. They were right around $35,000 to $50,000 in aggregate for this matrix of units we have. So I think there's, I think we figured there was about two, just over 223 units that we have inventory of. So depending on, if they're on a public easement that we'd have access to, and they fell into that consideration, if future changes in the downtown, and somebody wanted this trend caught on, and people that currently have, are paying for their private collection, choose to get on the program, that's an issue to consider as well.
I'd also like to add that the current contract speaks to a single-family duplex curbside collection and multifamily apartment building curbside, and it's a price per unit. So if you're introducing condos, then it may be, it would definitely be further discussions with Casella.
Councilor Harriman.
Thank you. Thank you for all this information. I guess, so you said that currently, single families, duplexes, and owner-occupied three units are considered residential?
Correct.
And they don't have to pay an extra fee to be on the city's program?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. So does that matter if they are, let's say, let's say I own a single family, but I don't live in it and I rent it to somebody? Does that make a difference in that?
Single family.
It's still a single family?
Yep.
Okay. It seems to me, in this, in this whole procedure, that condos, especially, especially when they're owned, which I guess that's sort of the definition of a condo versus an apartment, it seems like a basic fairness issue. If I own a, you know, I own a single family, and I, my taxes are paying for the, for the trash collection, I don't have to pay an extra fee. If I own a condo, it seems like it should be the same way, because it's still basically a, it's a single unit that I own, and it seems like that should be covered, in, in my opinion. I guess there might be more discussion to have around that, but that's where I am right now.
Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm FY '26, $2 million, which we talked about, $950,000 for recycling. So if we didn't have recycling, would we save $1 million and just have regular trash? Or will regular trash go to $3 million? That's my first question.
Again, I'd want to take that up with Casella, because the contract was price per unit. It didn't separate solid waste from recycle. We've always had both, provided both. With the apartment program, we provide both. Residential, we provide both.
But if we didn't provide both, would we save $950,000?
I can't give that answer. I'd have to speak further with Casella, because that's not how the contract reads.
I'm not sure what our...
I would think that we would for...
In, in theory, I'm not sure what our tonnage would be, added collection, but it's a good topic.
It'd be a good question for when you come to budget, because I'm going to ask it again. Because not that I'm against recycling, because I am not. However, I am looking at a city budget that's going to be difficult to maintain at a particular number tax-wise, and, you know, people can recycle themselves. Those people that feel that way, and can bag it up, and find a recycle station, and get rid of it, as far as I'm concerned, if I could save a million dollars. Thank you.
Counselor Najin.
Okay. So I'm going to have a lot of things to say. Let's start with, right now, we have a, we have two trash systems in our community, right? We have, it's, it's very Dickensian. We have a city trash system, and then we have whatever somebody else wants to do. We don't regulate any of the trash haulers. If it's Pine Tree, then that's Casella, and the service is very similar to what we give for city services. If it's Johnny's Trash Pickup, and it's a pickup truck with, you know, four-by-eights shoved in the back, plywood pieces shoved in the back, and then the trash is drawn to, you know, driven to Lisbon, right? Like, it's a different system. And ultimately, we don't offer recycling to everybody in our community, right? That's another piece as well. If we're not recycling, then we're burning the waste at MWAAC, and it's going into our landfill facility, 100%. And the landfill is going to be very expensive for us. Waste diversion is very important when we're thinking about replacing that. Just want to point that out. My arguments for looking at all of this, like you've shown the pictures of all the, all the condos that, that have their own dumpsters, right? And like, the, one of the issues that I have with grandfathering anything in this city, instead of sunsetting things, not one of those dumpsters has a screen around it, right? Not one of those dumpsters is sitting on a pad. Every spring and fall, we ask all of our citizens to go around and pick up all the garbage in the community, that blows out of things like dumpsters. So, you know, the biggest part, basically, there's a lot more we have to talk about, other than this one condo piece. And I know that it's, it's, it's not something that we're going to address immediately right now, but I would say that if we're looking at incentivizing infill development within our community, we have to look at what we consider to be a commercial unit. Ultimately, if we're allowing, under LD 2003, attached and detached ADUs, we're, we're allowing two units per property. And in the growth zones, we're talking about the two-and-a-half times, four units by right, and then the two-and-a-half time density bonus. So we're talking about 10 units if it's, if it's an affordable housing development, which, by the way, could be cottage-style housing with a courtyard, right? Where everybody owns their own little cottage-style piece, or townhouses, which, again, everybody owns their own townhouse. When we get into the downtown areas, I think it becomes more important to have a consistent trash pickup model. And I understand that some of these places are simply too big to, to, to come into the, into it easily. But when we look at the cost, we're already subsidizing single and, 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 and two-unit homes right now, right? It's costing us $250 per unit, but if we charge for a new, for a new service to come in, it's $175 bucks at this moment, it's still costing us $250 per unit if it's a single-family home, correct? My question on that is, what is the offset for the transfer station? So basically, what are we getting back in tipping fees?
I don't have that available right now, but I can tell you that in apartment billing collections, FY '25, I think we're at $324,000 in revenues coming in for a collection of apartments that are on the program.
$271.
$271.
We're predicting $271.
Okay. Now, sorry, go ahead.
Just in line with that is the, oh, I'm sorry, I lost it. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, anytime somebody owns a home, whether it's a condo, townhouse, cottage-style, however the ownership model is, they're paying tax in, and I understand that we're supplementing curbside pickup for single-family homes already, right? So if we can look at any of those models where the individual owns, even if it's an HOA that is organized for tax purposes, or for, you know, responsibility for, for, for cost sharing, for plowing, or, you know, triple net, whatever it might be, there's no reason why I get trash service at my house, and a, a brand-new, which we want to see, right? Brand-new, let's say, six-unit condominium would not, right? And so I, I think we're, everybody in the, in the condo association owns their own condo. So I would highly support, for now, you know, looking at including condominiums to a certain size, and, and also rewriting some of those, some of the ordinances that are in place. I just think that it's long overdue, and we're, I believe you're right, that we do need to offset the costs to, to add people onto the program. But I also think that by limiting who can come onto the program, it's not always, ultimately, there's not a lot of competition in the community. And so we're allowing our supplier to basically set pricing for people we won't service. And so, you know, that, that's another concern as well.
Yes, Counselor Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a, my microphone is definitely different. One of the things that I would support, like Counselor Najin and Counselor Herriman, when you have a multi-unit that is owned by one person, and then it goes into a condo where three or four people own it at that point, I would be looking to maybe change the ordinances with that, because I think individuals who own their piece of that should be considered like a single-family home. That's what I'm thinking. So with that being said, I do have some suggestions on some changes, if we want to kind of look at that at some point, but I'd be in favor of changing some of these ordinances right now. So, and how to do that, however you see fit. But I can give you a copy of these changes, and I'd like you to consider those.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Chidum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't have my hand up, but I'm, I'm always willing to speak.
I, I anticipated this. Please continue.
Thank you. I agree with the counselors who have indicated that the ownership model should not be dictating how we charge and whether or not we provide services. It seems to me that an individual creates and generates a certain amount of solid waste, and that needs to be dealt with by the community, one way or another. I understand where one single unit has 14 apartments in it, creates a problem, but the townhouse, the condo ownership, the single-family ownership, that should not be a distinction when we are talking about solid waste collection. So condo owners should be treated just the way single-family owners are. I, I don't know that anybody on the council disagrees with that, and if we have to change our ordinances to reflect that, so be it. That's something that, that we're all amenable to, to do. The greater issue, or greater question is, how do we deal with the high density of apartment buildings? Currently, those folks are left on their own. It's, it's been argued back and forth whether or not tenants in apartment buildings are paying taxes. I don't want to go down that road right now, but ultimately, they are contributing to the community. So are we going to subsidize that and create trash collection for multi-units as well? That's a slightly different question, because of the, the physical aspects of it. We're talking about dumpsters instead of individual collection canisters, bins. So it's certainly, there are a lot of moving parts, and, and we are going to have to take a look at it, but I think we've overly complicated our trash collection and our recycling programs by artificially distinguishing types of ownership, when that really doesn't factor into the amount of trash that's being generated on average. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Najin.
Sorry to come back to this, but one point that, that I think is relevant to all of this, is that we have, possibly, we can't pick up everybody's trash, right? Possibly, there's, there's no way to do that. But what we could do, is we could set the standard, so that trash pickup that the city is, is providing is the same as trash pickup that an individual contractor is supplying. So we know that certain property management companies do an excellent job of tra, of, of their trash removal, right? We don't have any problems. And we also know that there's constantly a fight between, it's the tenant's problem and the landlord's problem, right? But the one piece we're missing is the trash hauler. And so like, if we can make it so that the standards that we accept from Casella in this community are the same for everyone who hauls trash in this community, and again, tie it back to our transfer facility, so at least we're seeing, it's, our trash that's coming from our community should be going to our transfer facility, because it generates revenues for us, and it's a true representation of the amount of trash that's being produced. And, and so, you know, those are just my thoughts on that, and I think that we've given some pretty clear guidance on the condo piece, but I'm going to come back to, to council and you folks to see if we can maybe set something up to, to, to move forward some of the things that I know you've been working on for years. You know, you've had, I, I think, three different waste management subcommittees that, that have worked with you, plus a, a recycling committee in and of itself. There were some great ideas that have already been proposed, and I think it's just a question of maybe moving some of those things forward, so that we have an equitable recycling and trash system within the city that actually produces a situation where we don't have property owners getting in trouble, because their, their, their trash company comes to pick up on the wrong day. We don't have trash in snowbanks, you know, that gets frozen, and then the spring, it's a surprise for everybody. You know, all of these pieces that, like, we just standardize the quality of service, even if we can't standardize the, the provider.
So at, at this point, I, I think we're, and I am in agreement as well, that, you know, condos should be included. So perhaps we can get that on the agenda, and then maybe have another trash workshop to talk about some of these other elements.
Do some trash talk?
There, there you go. Administrator, sorry, yes, Director Gagne.
Sure. One thought I'd like to share with you all is that, you know, I, I think Counselor Najin, you pointed out, anytime we grandfather anything, we don't tend to sunset anything. So I, I appreciate that comment, and I would apply it to, these ordinance have been on the books. Somebody chose to take something that still was not applicable as an apartment building for a city pickup, and then now we're going to be picking it up. So that was very clear in our ordinances, that should be part of somebody's business plan. There's nothing unknown about that. You can quantify it. And for somebody that has a condo, there's usually a condo association, and while they may not be for profit, that's a group entity for, for group benefit. So I get the perspective of having private ownership of that condo, similar to a private residence. Agree. The other consideration would be that while the city is, right now, we haven't adjusted our rates, and we're low, we're getting more people coming to us. One thing we have tried to do over the years that I've been here is not compete with private business. Right now, we're competing with private business, and we're out-competing some of these haulers. And we don't want to do that typically, and is how I've been operating with the city under multiple administrators, and I haven't talked about this with Acting City Administrator O'Malley. We have a new city administrator, starting from what I hear. So I would like to continue this conversation, but those are a couple ideas that, that also play in, is that right now, we're artificially lower, we're seeing people ask. There are other haulers out there, and, and while trash is definitely an issue, and litter's definitely an issue, I want to help solve that. I, I don't know that we want to get into a situation where we're putting small businesses that may be starting up, and trying to be in, in the trash or solid waste hauling business, that we out-compete with them. So I just throw those considerations out there for future topic.
Counselor Najin.
Just to speak back to that point, I wholeheartedly agree that we're in a situation in our community where not a lot of people bid on, on contracts we put out, right? There's not a lot of people who, who come back to our RTPs and say, "Hey, creating avenues for competition within our community is going to, to, to help the city overall, and it's going to encourage and incentivize business." But again, coming back to that point about what we want to incentivize, within economic development, if we're, if we're like, "Oh, we want a multi-use building in this community. We want you to build a, a three-unit with a bakery, but, you know, you're going to have to figure out what you do with your trash." That's not necessarily a motivating factor. And so like, we have to balance all of those pieces. We have to make sure that, that what we're asking for makes sense, both in the economic climate, and also for what we desire to see in our community in order to raise the tax base. So, just to name that. But I 100% wholeheartedly agree, we need to get to a place where we're encouraging smaller and indifferent providers to, to put in bids with the city, so.
Administrator O'Malley, I guess, yeah, so we will, you know, let you work with Public Works to get condos added to ordinance...
Yeah, we'll schedule it at a later date as we, as we get more information.
Okay. And then a, and then a potentially another workshop. Yes, Counselor Najin.
Can, would it be acceptable to get a general sense from the council at this point, that we would like to see the costs that are currently being paid when people opt for those, to, to be what they actually are, as opposed to subsidizing it? So right now, we know that each unit is 170, but the cost is actually 250. Would it be acceptable to see everybody's opinion, so that when they come back, they have, they're prepared to present that?
Is that also set in the ordinance?
Updating a FEAP schedule is in a policy, from what I understand, it's in the solid waste policy, and it's something that's coordinated with finance, to look at that. So we can bring those costs back, and annually, we should be revisiting as part of the budget process, to update any of those fees, to make sure we're not artificially subsidizing and we're covering our cost, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you for your, for your time and consideration and ideas.
Okay. Thank you both. Yes, thank you. All right, well, that concludes our workshops for this evening. We're going to take a very quick break, and then get our meeting underway very quickly here, or very shortly. very quickly here, or very shortly. Hello, welcome to our Tuesday evening council meeting. We're going to kick things off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Director Gagne, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? And I apologize that I did not ask you before.
... To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Director. Madam Clerk, I believe we're ready to begin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the Council of Ward Two.
I understand. We have minutes?
We do. The minutes of January 7th.
Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Counselor Chittum.
Second.
Second by Counselor Glant. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. We are now up to public comment. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston city government. This period is reserved for non-agenda items. Public comment is also allowed during individual agenda items. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name for the record, and please indicate if you're a Lewiston resident. Because this is the business meeting of the City Council, all questions should be directed to the mayor, who will ask staff to follow up at a future time. It is illegal for City Council to allow comments related to personnel matters. All personnel complaints should be made directly to the City Administration Office.
Matthew Agren, Ward Four. At the recent school committee meeting, I'd like to say it was a grand move to see a more open and transparent way that the voting was done. I want to personally call out Councilman Harriman and Mayor Shaleen for standing with me, and supporting transparency is the way Lewiston government should be done. Now, as you may or may not know, January is National Human Trafficking Prevention Month, aimed at raising the awareness of human trafficking and promoting efforts to combat this crime. Human trafficking is often a hidden crime, involving some level of use of force, fraud, or coercion to gain labor, domestic services, or sex trafficking. It's a true threat to the rule of law, robs millions of their dignity and freedom, and enriches transnational criminals, and threatens public safety. These victims, which can be U.S. citizens, or any other nationality, any age, socioeconomic status, or gender, very often are too afraid to come forward to get help, because they've been forced to cohere with threats of, or violence, and may fear that if they do, retribution from their traffickers will include danger to their own families. If you are interested, the Auburn Public Library, on January 30th at 5:00 p.m., will be screening Sex exploitation, the story of four courageous Maine women who endured the dark world of sex trafficking, survived, recovered, and has turned their trauma into a life of service to others. Why I bring this up is when Chief St. Pierre did his press conference here, in this very room not too long ago, it was revealed that the city of Lewiston has an officer assigned to work in this field and interface with the Department of Homeland Security. So, this is not something that just happens somewhere else, it's here. We still have issues with violence in this area, and it's not just limited to one location or racial background, and it's not going away anytime soon, unfortunately. So, could we, the public, ask for another press conference, a public meeting and update with our police chief, to have him go over what results he and his force are seeing, bringing together the city as he laid out in his press conference, to bring this all back under control? And finally, to the council and to Chief St. Pierre, what more does Lewiston law enforcement need to help keep our city and its people safe?
Matt Roy, Ward Three. I guess I'll piggyback on a certain word that Mr. Agren used, transparency, which him and I have, over the last couple of years, have beat the drum heavily on, in some respects. Well, first of all, we've had, since last month, three workshops on the TIF for the corridor transfer station, and it was said multiple times that you guys were, well, Director Libby would be bringing forth the proposal finally for you guys to approve, so we can get that submitted to Economic and Community Development up in Augusta before, well, so it can get approved before March. My shock that it's not on the agenda, for whatever reason, who knows? Second of all, at the last meeting, you guys approved new rules, which, so, and the rules are very vague on consent agenda and what constitutes that. Only actually says that there may be a consent agenda prepared. And then, third of all, my surprise and shock, or whatever S-word you want to, a synonym there, of what Director Public Works just stated about the city administrator and that search process, and the, my comments at the last meeting, and in December, about the timeline, and, you know, it was always stated that, you know, once we got down to the, some finalists, that there were going to be public meetings, that hasn't happened. And as we're fast approaching 11 months with an interim administrator, as I said the last time, and how that relates to the budget. These are all very concerning issues about transparency, or I should say, the lack of transparency that we've seen lately, which is disturbing. Thank you.
Public comment is now closed. Madam Clerk, yes, we have a consent agenda?
Yes, we have three items on the consent agenda this evening. Item number one, appointments of City Council representatives and staff representatives to various boards and committees. Number two, appointments to the Lewiston Area Public Health Committee. And number three, orders authorizing execution of municipal quitclaim deeds for real estate located at 242 Oak Street and 25 Peter Boulevard.
May I have a motion, please?
I move approval of the three items on the consent agenda.
Counselor Chittum, second by Counselor Nagy. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number four.
Item number four, public hearing on a renewal application for a special amusement permit for live entertainment for Midtown Athletic Club, 875 Lisbon Street. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment for Midtown Athletic Club, 875 Lisbon Street.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Harriman.
Second.
Second by Counselor Chittum. Discussion. Public comment. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Item number five.
Item number five, public hearing and final passage for an amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Two definitions. Requested action that the proposed amendments to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Two definitions, to amend the definitions of homeless shelter, receive final passage by a roll call vote.
I have a motion, please.
So moved.
Counselor Glant.
Second.
Second by Counselor Chittum. Director Connors, please kick us off.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if you'll indulge me for just a second as I pull up a map anyways. Okay, so, the last council meeting, which I apologize, I was not able to attend, Deputy Director Norton went over this, these changes, the definitions. I understand that there were a few questions on this particular one after, I believe it was Counselor Chittum had brought up the issue of either onsite or offsite. As I watched the video, there was a 7-0 vote. Nothing has changed in the ordinance that has been brought before you, so we're here for the second reading of this particular definition.
Thank you. Discussion from the council. Public comment. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number five.
Actually, item number six, I think, Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you.
Public hearing and final passage for an amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Three official map. Requested action that the proposed amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Three official map, to eliminate the homeless shelter overlay district, receive final passage by a roll call vote.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittum.
Second.
Second by Counselor Harriman. Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know the last council meeting, when this particular agenda item came up, it was tabled because the verbiage of the following agenda item may come into play with this one. I don't know if that's something that the council would like to do tonight as well.
Counselor Chittum.
Director Connor is right, but it was tabled till later in the meeting and acted on out of order, so it has been approved in first reading.
Okay, perfect. So, nothing has changed. I know that the, like I said, it was tabled till later in the meeting, and then it came back and received a 7-0 vote, so nothing has changed from the last council meeting.
Counselor Nagy.
So, I just want to say, for all of these, I have not seen any public comment from the first reading to the second reading, so it doesn't seem that there's been much outreach from the community at all concerning any of this change.
Our office has not received anything, no.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, so, do we, would we like to do this last time, table this until we pass the subsequent, or the future item, or should we just pass it now? Counselor Chittum.
Mr. Mayor, that's not necessary. The reason for tabling at the last meeting was that it was really out of order with the agenda item three following. We've dealt with that, so I don't believe there's any reason not to vote on this right now.
Sounds good, thank you. Yes, Counselor Nagy.
If we could vote on it as a slate, I would, so.
Yeah, I'm always hesitant to do that, but thank you. Public comment for this agenda item. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number seven.
Item number seven, public hearing and final passage for an amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Five, I'm sorry, Article Four, Establishment of Districts. That's the proposed amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Four, Establishment of Districts, to eliminate the homeless shelter overlay district, receive first, final passage by a roll call vote.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittum, second by Counselor Nagy. Director.
And this is another one. We have not received any changes or any updates. It just removes the homeless shelter overlay district from this particular line of the ordinance. This is also a 7-0.
My apologies.
Sorry.
Discussion from the council. Public comment. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number eight.
Item number eight, public hearing and final passage for an amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Ten, Conditional Uses. Requested action that the proposed amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Ten, Conditional Uses, receive, to add review criteria for conditional use permits for homeless shelters, receive final passage by a roll call vote.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Nagy, second by Counselor Harriman. Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The one item that I believe was amended in the last council meeting was Counselor Chittum asked to amend the language to state at least 50 square feet per person. That has been done and corrected in the ordinance, and again, this one went 7-0 in the last council meeting.
Discussion. Public comment. Back to the council. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, Counselor Nagin, yes?
I just want to state again that I greatly appreciate the work that your department, as well as the planning board, did around these pieces. It was very considerate and considered the way that these land use, table space and bulk chart changes were put in place. Greatly appreciated. Well done.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And as I said, I watched the last meeting and I heard all of your appreciations to Deputy Director Norton and the team and the planning board, so thank you. It means a lot. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Madam Clerk, what item are we on?
Item nine.
Thank you. Item number nine.
Item number nine, public hearing and final passage for an amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Eleven District Regulations. Requested action, that the proposed amendments to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Eleven District Regulations, identifying additional districts where homeless shelters are allowed, and to remove the overlay, the shelter overlay district, receive final passage by a roll call vote.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chidham?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Nagin. Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this was the, the one agenda item that had the most discussion last council meeting. I believe that the two items that came up were the questioning regarding adding the industrial zone, and I believe Planning Board member Pine got up and spoke at public comment and kind of gave the reasoning behind the planning board bringing that up. The other comment was the buffer around parks, and we haven't heard any more comments from the public in our office. I understand that there is a, an image that Counselor Chidham has provided that he would like to show here, and I can blow this up a little bit to make it. So, the top image here, would you like, would you like to speak to this, Counselor? I'm sorry, I don't mean to step on you there.
Thank you, Director Connor. The first image shows the area that has been identified by the planning board as being suitable for adult shelters, whether they're 24-hour or not. Any of the zones included in the blue area would be the only zones in which adult shelters could be located in the city of Lewiston. If you could show the slide below, this is my concern about a buffer zone around parks, especially when measured property line to property line. All of those red areas would be excluded from the allowable adult shelter, whether it's 24 or not, because they lie on property that at some point falls within 250 feet of a public park. Mr. Mayor, I'm not certain whether you're opening this up to comment council, or council comments or not at this point.
Did you have anything further, Director?
I don't, the only question that I had on this particular one was the far right, the red there. I'm assuming that is the boat launch park, if I'm not mistaken? That's correct. Okay. That was the one that I was curious on, but I have, I have nothing further. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Please continue, Counsel Chidham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to offer an amendment to revise the language by striking in section, subsection D, the words "and must also be located 250 feet away from city parks measured from property line to property line." I'm sorry, I had provided, I have copies of this graphic. I provided them for the public, and I also have copies for the council, but you can see it onboard here. There is a fundamental question of equity involved here, and that is, public parks are a public amenity. They are available to anybody, anybody. Not Lewiston residents, not taxpayers, not, not qualified in any way. Anyone who wants to use a public park may use a public park. And it seems to me that requiring homeless shelters to be located a specific distance, whether it's one foot or 1,000 feet from a public park, has no other purpose than to discourage the use of public parks by the patrons of homeless shelters. I find this discriminatory, and it offends me personally. I do not understand what the rationale is. I said at the last meeting that I, I understood but did not agree with the separation distance between daycares and homeless shelters, and schools and homeless shelters. The homeless people are using our parks today. There is no reason for us to say that shelters must be located 250 feet or any distance from public parks. By doing so, we have eliminated conservatively 10% to 15% of the area that the planning board has very judiciously determined to be in the best interest of housing public shelters. I particularly want to note the area around Potvin Park, Kennedy Park, and Parity Park. This is an area which would be well suited for a, an adult homeless shelter, it being located close to services and the downtown area, and yet, this prohibition against putting shelters within a distance of a park eliminates those areas from consideration. I've made a motion, I've made my speech, I would love a second and discussion by the council. Thank you.
Counsel Harriman?
I would second the motion. I agree with Counselor Chidham.
Madam Clerk, did you catch the motion that is now on the floor?
Yes, thank you. We are going to be striking in 40D, the last section, which starts with "and must be located 250 feet from city parks measured from property line to property line."
Director Connor, did you have comments?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, and I don't know if it will come up as a second motion, but if, if that is to be struck, the very next sentence may need to have a strike as well.
Correct. Are we accepting it as a friendly amendment?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Connor. I appreciate your attention to detail. That's normally my purview. Thank you. So, I would, I would amend my amendment to remove the words "or parks" from section, subsection E, if that's suitable to Counselor Harriman.
Yes.
I believe, are we all set, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. And just to jump in here, yeah, I mean, Counselor Chidham brings up a great point. Our homeless are in the parks right now, and, you know, we're running shelters, not jails, and so, you know, nothing will prevent, you know, let's say, a shelter is built 250 feet from the park, nothing will prevent individuals from walking to use the park during the day. Yeah, I agree that this just seems like arbitrary and unnecessary. Counselor Sol.
So, I understand what Counselor Chidham is saying, however, for me, it's not about just the shelter, it's about some of the behaviors that come along with the shelter. And a lot of those behaviors, and I get, I know they can walk to the park, anybody can walk, and I'm not saying that, we're not saying they can't use the park, just not park a shelter right next door to it. That just doesn't sit well with me. It's not that they're homeless, it's some of the behaviors that come along with it. And it's not everyone, but it's a lot of it. And I just think that will trickle into the parks. I said it last time, look what's happening at Kennedy Park. I just don't want to see that happen all around the city. So, I am not in favor for removing the buffers around parks.
Counselor Nagin.
So, a few things on this. First and foremost, some of the parks that are identified in the community have very low value. If, it's a piece of grass that we mow, it's not a park, so that's just going to name that. We have, I think, 22 parks in our, in our community, and so, some of them really have no value as parks. They're just pieces that we're maintaining. Secondly, to speak directly to Parity, Kennedy, and Potvin parks, we're talking about some of our densest housing in the community, where folks don't really have a lot of avenues for occupying public space in general, and already, there is a presence of conflicting uses in all three of these parks, right? And it's not just unhomed folks, it's all kinds of different things going on. But, we're talking about some of the most marginalized people in our community who are dealing with some of the, some people who are in the most crisis, visible crisis in our community, and there's a conflict there. I want four-year-olds, five-year-olds, six-year-olds to be able to use Knox Street Park and not be concerned while they're on the playground with the fact that it's the smoking area for a shelter adjacent to it, or it's a place that people will go to, to drink a beer before they go into the shelter, because what we're talking about specifically is single adult shelters, large single adult shelters that follow the low barrier model. The family and youth shelters, already the buffer is not applicable. And so, we need to meet the needs of the people in our community who we're not meeting, but we also need to be mindful of the fact that there are people in our community we have not met the needs of, who are not, that are homed as well. And so, there's a conflict there, and that's my concern. I would say that this would be a good start, that we go forward and pass this without the amendment, and that we really drill down on which parks that we want to protect as places that, that have value for families and for youth in our community. And also, while we're talking about that, maybe put some investment in them, because I don't know if you've seen Parity Park lately, but it's, I would be disappointed to consider that to be my local park, you know? And so, I just wanted to name all those things. I understand the viewpoint, and you're absolutely right. At Sunnyside right now, there are folks that travel through, you know, that, absolutely. There are folks that camp out in lots of places, but it shouldn't be the norm. We should be providing a facility for folks to go to, so, those are my comments.
Counsel Glenn.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't support this change. Quite frankly, I deal and work with homeless people, so I understand their nature, and 250 feet, you're acting like it's 10 miles. Quite frankly, it's less than a football field, so it's not like they couldn't get to the park. The reality is, they go to the park, drink, do their drugs, and then go to the shelter. Remember, a low barrier shelter is a 24-hour place. They should be staying at to get help, care, and what's going on, not being able to run out the door to a convenient spot and location to do things maybe they shouldn't be doing. I am compassionate, I do tons of work with them, quite frankly, and I don't think 250 feet is too far to ask anybody to walk if they want to go to a park. Our families have to walk that, sometimes 10 times that distance to bring their kids to a park. I think it's a very small item to be considering when we want to consider the big picture. You said yourself 15%, that's not a big percentage. 85% is plenty of room. So, it's not like, they can't go nowhere, and they can still use the parks. So, no one's not being allowed to use the parks. We'll just try to set up a barrier around an area to make sure that we can protect all of our citizens, not one particular group, which you're advocating for, quite frankly. I look at the big picture, and if that's the case, 95% of the people are okay, 5 aren't. I go for the 95. I won't support it.
We're going to public comment for this agenda item. And now, now, now we're back. Counsel Chidham.
Yes, I would like to make one other point, and that is that a, an adult shelter currently exists within 250 feet of Potvin Park. I'm unaware that there has been any adverse effect of that shelter, which has existed in proximity to Potvin Park for many, many, many years. So, I see this as nothing more than discriminatory, and argue that the park should not constitute a buffer around homeless shelters. I also would like to point out that 250 feet, by using the definition of property line to property line, can become vast. If you look at the northern end of the urban enterprise zone, the red to the far left on the chart, almost that entire area has been removed from consideration simply because of a small strip that's called the Riverside Evergreen Park. Those are relatively large lots up there. If any tiny portion of that lot falls within 250 feet of the boundary of the strip of Riverside Evergreen Park, the entire parcel is removed from consideration. I will also remind the councilors that all shelters, regardless of size or functionality, require a conditional use permit which specifies additional requirements for those shelters anywhere in the city of Lewiston. Thank you.
Counsel Nagin.
So, this, this comes back to my, my point about going through and looking at the different parks and deciding its value, and also, it's, which we can do at a later date. For instance, when you talk about the Lewiston-Greenway Trail, we've had problems with encampments for years, and the truth is, I would not be uncomfortable with, with a adult-use shelter somewhere near the walking trail, for sure, 100%. And also, I would just like to say, it's very difficult to sound trauma-informed when we're speaking to some of these things, to some of the language that we're using, like, I understand the message and not the way we're presenting it, I guess, is the way I would say it. You know, the fear for me is that we're, and I agree, concerning the presence of unhomed individuals everywhere in our community. They're everywhere, and they can be everywhere in public spaces, because they only have public spaces, right? That's, that's the truth. And so, you know, I completely understand the viewpoint, and I'm, and I'm not necessarily against it, but I do think that there are, when I think about some of the family parks or the parks that we're going to put investment in, in order to create public squares for our, for our community, it's the adjacent complementary and accessory uses as well, you know? It's, to start with, I would like to pass the ordinance as written, and then review the parks afterwards to decide whether or not we can remove the buffer for certain parks. Again, speaking to the low barrier shelter model, these folks don't even have to identify themselves to check into these facilities, and in some cases, I mean, look at the numbers. It's not uncommon for RSOs to be unhomed. I mean, that's, it's a fact, you know, so, you know, I think it's important to protect some of the parks, that's all. That's all I'm saying.
Further comments or questions from the council? Madam Clerk, will you vote on this amendment?
Do you need, Jamie, me, sorry, do you need me to review the amendment again?
Please.
Okay, I will, yes.
Thank you.
So, Section 40D, the proposal is to strike the last section which reads "and must be located 250 feet away from city parks measured from property line to property line." The amendment also is to strike 40E, the phrase "or parks."
Please call the vote.
Counsel from Word Two?
No.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
No.
Word Five?
No.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
No.
Word One?
Yes. No, sorry, no.
Motion fails by a vote of two to five.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Before you, is the main motion.
Yeah, we are now back to the main motion. Further discussion on this motion? Yes, Counsel Chidham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I'm disappointed in the fate of the amendment, I think in, in large part, this is a good ordinance, and I do want to commend the planning board for the diligence and thought it put into it, with the one exception with which I disagree. So, I will be voting in favor of this despite my disappointment, my extreme disappointment in the failure of the amended motion.
Counsel Nagin.
I would just like to say that I don't think the conversation is truly over, because I think that we can eliminate some of these parks comfortably, and so, I think that we should continue to look at that as well. But, I'm going to vote in favor to get something on the books that we can move forward with.
Out of abundance of caution, we'll go to public comment for the main motion. And, and now we're back. Anything further, Director?
No, sir.
Councilors. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number 10.
Item number 10, public hearing in final passage for an amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article 11, District Regulations Regarding the No Name Pond Conservation Overlay District. Requested action that the reposed amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article 11, District Regulations Regarding the No Name Pond Conservation Overlay District received final passage by a roll call vote.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Councilor Chidham.
Second.
Sent by Councilor Najin. Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I believe Deputy Director Norton did a fabulous job of explaining this, how it brings the two overlays into some sort of congruence while, while still having protections in place. This was a 7-0 vote in regard to one of the comments made, we did go back through and change the, the document that capitalizes "no name pond" throughout the document, so.
Questions, comments from the councilors? Public comment. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just go ahead and take the rest of the night off. We are now up to our new, second public comment period. Should there, should there be any? No, I, I think it's once per, once per meeting, but we appreciate you two being here. Public comment is now closed, and we are now up to reports and updates. Councilor Chidham.
Thank you. Very briefly, the Lewiston Transit Committee met, considered alterations to the bus routes that would better service Sunnyside, that's an ongoing discussion debate, it's a lot more complex issue than I had realized. The committee will also be reviewing proposals for providing public transit to Lewiston and Auburn. We had two proposals received, and there'll be a review of that coming up in the very near future, and a new contract awarded to one of the two proposers.
Councilor Glant.
Update on the senior committee, we are gonna extend our meeting next month to an hour and a half, we need a little extra time as we go through some of the changes we're gonna make with the money received, get grants going forward, so the public can be aware we'll be there longer should they come visit. We've had some public visitors. Also, Lewiston Housing is doing a desert in discussion for 50-plus seniors, they're starting to post things out, it's gonna be on January 29th, and it's basically a countywide program gonna help seniors understand what things they're eligible for here in the community. So I hope to do some more follow-up of that here soon, and if we can partner with them, we being our seniors, then we can probably get it on the city site to get our citizens a better chance to see what's going on.
Councilor Harriman.
Thank you. Update from the school committee, you may have seen in the newspaper, we met again on the 13th, we had a workshop to review procedures for nominating and electing the chairperson, we rescinded the vote from the week prior, and then voted using the new procedure, and, and ended up voting Megan Parks as the chairwoman again. And we also have, the school committee also has a vice chair and parliamentarian positions. We decided that the vice chair, as in years past, we decided to sort of strike that position, the only purpose of that, of that office is to take over for the chairperson if they happen to be, if they happen to be absent from a meeting, we decided to just elect a temporary chairperson if that were the case. But we did decide that we do need a parliamentarian to help with the procedural sort of things, and talks are still ongoing as far as who is up to the task for doing that. That's all I've got from the school committee.
Further reports and updates. Councilor Chidham, yes.
Yes, discussions with the Church of Safe Injection are ongoing vis a vis syringe litter. I had conversations with the executive director this afternoon, and I wonder, is this an appropriate time, Administrator, to talk about the communication, or should, should we not mention that?
We just mentioned it.
The, the communication.
Are you talking about the letter that I received?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's probably not a good time to talk about that. I've been in discussions with the city attorney on that as well.
All right, thank you. Leave it at, we are in ongoing discussions with Public Works and Church of Safe Injection to address the syringe litter issues in Lewiston.
Further reports and updates. We are now up to new business, should there be, Councilor Najin, yes.
So just quickly, this is basically a public service message, for anybody who's still listening, CSX has increased the speed in which the train travels through the community to 40 miles per hour. That's due to 40 through the, the Ward 1 for mile mark, yeah. So anyway, it's due to a series of upgrades to the rail lines, and the, that's the normal speed in which the cargo traffic is, is supposed to move on the rail lines, but the thing is, it's been going 10 miles per hour for a long time through my neighborhood, in particular, with three different crossings, and also on Strawberry Ave, and I believe Stetson, by the time it hits Stetson Road, it's normally going 25 at this point, I believe, and it'll be going 40 now. The reason why this is important is always, don't stand on the tracks, don't walk on the tracks, don't park on the tracks, obey the, 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 the crossing gauges so that you're not driving around them, the train's moving much faster now. And I'm going to do my level best to see if we can get some, there are federal funding grants for education that do exist, I'm gonna have a conversation with Auburn as well to see if we can apply for some of those. And eventually, hopefully, we can look at possibly some quiet crossings as well, not because we're necessarily concerned about the train noise, but because it secures those traffic crossings better so that people cannot enter into the tracks when the train's coming. So, just, just public service notice, that's for every community along the tracks right now, so.
Thank you. Yes, Councilor Glant.
Thank you Mayor. I would like to make arrangements to bring our representatives back in here, we've had them in here twice, I reviewed all the bills, it looks like we're gonna be stuck again with the non-mandated funding from the school department, they seem to have a great interest in making sure we have condoms in our school and tampons in our schools, that's two bills that they put forward, but nothing about us having to pay our bills, so I'm pretty upset with that, and as a citizen and as a member of this, I want to make sure they realize they work for us, they're supposed to be trying to do things for us, there's over a million dollars or more in school budget that's gonna cost us this year, I'm hoping that the condoms and tampons don't cost that much, but I'm sure they're unfunded, and I would like to throw out Representative LaJoy, who's the only one who signed on to the mental health and substance abuse package to help people in our community get service, the rest of representatives did not. So I think we need to have a meeting with them sooner than later with a budget approaching us to see if they're gonna be doing anything, they sat right here and said, we'll go back and talk to people, and we'll see what's going on, I would like some feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Glant. I guess Administrator O'Malley, if you could email them and see what might work with their schedule.
Yeah, I can reach out and see their availability.
Yeah, and I also wanted to remind all the councilors that you're able to submit, you know, there's public comment periods for all the legislation in Augusta, nothing prevents you from, from submitting public comment and/or testifying in person. Yes, Councilor Glant?
I already submitted, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Councilor Glant. Councilor Harriman?
Thanks. Yeah, Councilor Glant reminded me, this is for any councilors and anyone in the public, our state delegation does have office hours, and their first one of the session is coming up this Saturday, it's 10:30 to noon at the, at the library, I believe they're on the first floor in that, that conference room there.
The couture room, yes.
Yes, so that's another opportunity for people to get in touch with them.
Madam Clerk, I believe we're ready to adjourn.
Fan?
Did you have something? Lots of people have stuff, okay, sorry. Counselor Roy.
Thank you. About maybe six months ago, we had talked about maybe getting Bill Healy in here, Bill Healy in here, senior tax break, stuff like that, I want to see homestead exemptions, is there a chance we can maybe have a workshop with him to see what we can do about that?
I believe he did send an email out and went over the costs of those type of things, but I can't see if he's available, I can bring him in.
And I think in that email, he might have said that he was willing to do a workshop or whatever, so I'd like to.
I can, yeah, I can schedule him, I just wanted to make sure you got that email.
Appreciate that.
Councilor Chidham, yes.
No one has mentioned it, but just as a public service, we are having a joint school committee meeting on the 23rd?
Eighth.
Eighth, on the 28th at the Green Ladle.
Yes, next Tuesday, and I believe it's at 6. Thank you. Councilor Glant, did you have something?
No, sir.
Okay. Councilor Najin, did you have something else?
Councilor Chidham covered it, I was just gonna point out that we do have a joint meeting, that's all.
Seeing no further business, Madam Clerk, I believe we're ready to adjourn.
Would you like a motion to adjourn?
Please, yes, yes. Thank you. Once again, I'm really glad you're here, Madam Clerk, so we have Councilor Glant, seconded by Councilor Sol, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
What time is it, Mr. Mayor?
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
It's definitely time to go home, thank you Lewiston, thank you to all the staff and councilors, you all have a wonderful evening.